I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for all coming today. Is there any additions or deletions to the agenda? We don't have any public comment on any agenda items? Opening up the public hearing, there's received comments of the community members regarding the teachers' benefits as a public hearing for the teachers' bargain.
Certainly. So this is a requirement by ERV for the startup bargaining. We had two reopeners in our two-year contract that would extend through the end of 2023. The first one is our increase in students. If we had an increase in students over last September to this September of seventy-five students or more, then we would come to the table to discuss salaries. Right now, it's not like seventy-five students, more like twenty-five to thirty right now that we're increasing. But our other reopening statement in there that we had that would bring us both back to the table would be our health insurance. If we had an increase in health insurance rates. Within our contract, our current contract right now, we have a defined contribution for our, what the corporation will pay towards those plans. Our increase in calendar year 2022, because those insurance rates are on calendar years, was a three percent overall increase. And in 2023, I'm happy, very happy, to announce that it's looking like a two percent increase. Although it's still a two percent, but two percent is much better than what I'm hearing from other school districts. Eight percent is like an average fourteen percent is not unusual. So our two percent is great within our, our own insurance. And again, we joined the trust two years ago, three years ago, and it's paying off obviously with our rates here. So the defined contributions that we have in here that the corporation will pay towards the plan are right now single plans. The district pays nine thousand seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars towards it. Employee plus child, the district pays sixteen thousand five hundred and thirty-seven dollars. Employee plus spouse, we pay eighteen thousand three hundred and fifty-three dollars. Family plan, the district plays, pays twenty-two thousand six hundred and sixty-two dollars towards that. There are defined contributions in there as well for if we have two employees in the bargaining unit that are both employed within the district and that are generous. So with the increase that we have, we met with parties on Monday of last week, if there was, and we, or this week. And that's just this week, right? So we met Monday this week and we both decided that we would go through bargaining to discuss the contribution rate since there was an increase. So at this point, we're having our public hearing and anyone would like to speak on behalf of anything within the contract that deals with the opener, which is health insurance here, I will hand it over to you to open it up for Helen.
Anybody have any notes?
Any questions? Or any questions or comments? We do have two members from the bargaining unit here. Do you guys have any questions or anything you want to say? Except Michelle, hi, and we also have Mary's student here. Okay. And at that point, if there's no questions or comments, then we can close the public hearing.
All right, superintendent's report.
So yesterday was the e-learning day in the district and our, while the kids were learning at home with great enthusiasm. Our staff, our staff was engaged in learning about our new protocols of the free outs, get out, take out, and lock out. And I see that we have an audience member here who is part of the safety team.
So is Jason, so don't let him off of them.
So Jason and Michelle, and Stacy, our safety coordinator, indicated that either one of you may be interested to report how things went yesterday?
Why don't you go first? We're both in different groups, so I'll just go first, Jason.
Sure. So I think the middle school, my school, we had about a hundred forty-six people sign in for the training. So quite a good attendance. We estimated a little lower, so that was good that we had more people turn out than we had. But yeah, we spent two hours doing a PowerPoint presentation and we both go for lunch. And we did skills and scenarios after that. And we had a lot of thank yous and this was really informative. And just teaching people skills that they could use here at school, but anywhere else they are, no case of, we're busy.
So the PowerPoint presentation Michelle's referring to was a review of case studies of active shooter situations in the United States. And identifying common themes and what we've learned from those studies. And so all of our staff were engaging in that. And then Jason?
Yeah, I was with the elementaries. It was like Michelle said, everybody was very receptive to it. I think the best part at, for the elementaries is we asked that anybody learn anything that made them feel safer and everybody raised their hand. So I think that was a good point, that everybody walked away with something. If it wasn't, you know, if it wasn't the hands-on that they took, they took the case studies. And they can see like, and Stacy's bringing up how she's following up with, from kids from grade school to high school and watching all that, if there's any warning. So I think it was, it turned out way better than I thought it did, for sure.
You know, a big deal in schools is keeping your classroom doors locked throughout the school day. And when you work in a school, that can be very inconvenient. Every, you're in the middle of teaching and every time somebody comes to the door, whether it be a kid going to the restroom or instructional assistant that's coming by or whatever, it's a little bit of inconvenience. The hope is that after yesterday, looking at the case studies, and what a big predictor, keeping classroom doors, that it makes it worth it, the inconvenience worth, you know, doing that. So it seemed like some good feedback and the, the nice thing about the free outs, it's simple and easy to remember. And the goal is that you could walk up to anybody in the hallway in any part of our district and say, what's the protocol for active shooter in the situation? And they would be able to tell you the free outs and talk a little bit more about what that means. And school safety is all about simplicity because you don't have time in a situation to grab for the manual and turn to the situation, what should I do?
To add, I think of the free outs, it's not linear. So when you're in a certain situation, you don't have to take one piece of it. You can use whatever is the best option for you at that time. So it's get out, and you just get out instead of just trying to run to a locked door. So I think it gives, it gives staff more options to do than trying to follow strict policy on it.
The next item in the report is still along with school safety is, you've heard of the Sandy Hook Foundation, Sandy Hook Promise, spirited from the tragedy out east. So there's a component that we've talked about before, there's an anonymous reporting system called Say Something. And it's free of charge. We will be the second school district in Indiana, all of Indiana, to have access to this resource. Oftentimes, there are waiting lists to be able to be a part of the program. So we're quite fortunate in that regard. Sandy Hook provides professionals that man the online system, the phone lines, three hundred sixty-five days a year, twenty-four hours of all of those days. And when they get a tip or a report, whether that be someone who's thinking about harming themselves or others, or someone who's reporting something suspicious, they are specifically trained to triage that, what is life-threatening right now to what can wait until the next business day. And then they have avenues to inform school personnel if it's wait till the next business day. If it's life-threatening, they call the local nine-one-one dispatch. They call the school safety team who, all of the people who are on the list, and they also call the team at the district level. Notifying those three teams, the objective is to basically do a wellbeing check. Law enforcement may not have all the information that they need, such as, we've got a name, but we have no idea who their parent is or where they live. So school, can you work and collaborate with us and help us fine tune where we can go to do a wellbeing check? Our team has done initial orientation. There is a student component that will take place in the upcoming weeks where there's approximately thirty-minute video, grade six through twelve, that will educate kids on how to make a report and what type of reports to make. And then we are looking at a launch, I believe approximately mid-October. Very exciting thought. Yeah, I would say two weeks ago, on Tuesday night, we hosted a town hall meeting in this room. There were thirteen, fifteen individuals that showed up. Michelle White Rock was there. And she got to speak in regards to school safety, that I appreciated that. We had a variety of topics. School safety was the hot, the most urgent topic. People were glad to know that we have off-duty police officers circulating through our LPG schools now. And we were able to educate about the free outs, the Say Something. We talked about social and emotional learning. Catherine was there. And we also talked about mental health and our behavior specialist in Indiana program we have in all three of our elementaries amongst, I don't know, a handful of other topics. So it was, it was a good time and we were there about an hour and a half. And hope to host another one in October, take off November and December, or we'll take it back up in June. That's all I had to report.
Thank you. Important report.
Yeah, some news from Co-op. Co-op believes that very, I mean, it's very admirable, losing a couple of years. Co-op believes taking, whether that without having to do, maybe loans, bankrupts, and anything like that. And do you have any more information about this, or is cost increases to us maybe?
In, in short, when just taking a look at the money that Marigold brings into the cooperative and the amount that they pay their assessment versus the resources for the amount of students they have in the program. They are, the end result is we're carrying them, that their costs are exceeding their revenues that are coming into the program. So that's what it is. There's students, a lot of students, and their population that are in the program that are picking up stuff that all of the other districts could be using too. So it's, when you look at it just from a, a betting app, they're, they're costing us, you know, we're carrying, it's an easy way to put it. So them leaving the cooperative is not going to affect us in any negative way. There are some hard true costs that we pay for, such as school lessons. But if we have less students, you can go down with us. Some of the capital costs to maintain legal park there will be split by the remaining schools without Marigold in there. But still, it's not a ton of money that we're talking about that it would really change. We don't have a lot of needs there.
And also, the Co-op builds Medicare for some of our students and brings in revenue to them, which they pass on to us, which also has reduced our payments that we've had to have. Now, they, they request a, requested a, some of that money themselves to use because they spend critical time making all the, all the buildings to the, to the Fed and all. So, so we're considering letting them have a share of it to pay for a person to do all this, because it's helping us out. I mean, it's hundreds of thousands of dollars we need to take in the whole.
It's been increasing year over year.
So they really, they really got a process in place to get, the people who are eligible, get them on board if it doesn't cost them anything, it helps them. So, so it's, it's been a big, good deal for us.
Thank you. All righty. Approve the minutes of the meeting held on Thursday, September eighth, twenty twenty-two.
You can have a second.
What's that?
You have a second, just so that she wasn't here. You have a second motion.
Oh, yeah, I have a second.
I gotta make a motion to. For this. You were here, I thought you said you were here.
I was.
Well, you weren't here.
I wasn't here.
Okay, I might mistake. Well, no, you weren't here last meeting. Oh, it was you.
Okay, man, here we go.
You took his spot.
Yeah, that's what I meant.
You want to make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the first hour of the meeting Thursday. Say another point there.
I'll second.
I have a motion to second. Any further discussion?
You got to abstain, that's what you got to do.
What?
You can't vote.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion passes. All right, personnel. Approve the personnel report made on Thursday, September twenty-second, twenty twenty-two.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion passes. Number two, approve the support staff salary schedule for the twenty-one, twenty-two, and the twenty-two, twenty-three school year.
So this is a state board of accounts requirement. We have to annually upload this into the Gateway system. In past, we've been able to upload our listing that we have in our handbook that lists all the starting rates. And state board of accounts has been fine with that. I'm noticing a trend in audits across the state in schools that they are now putting audit comments in there if you don't have a low and a high on the hourly rate for support staff in your resolution that you're uploading. So what you have before you, I'm correcting what we, our, our schedule from last year because I only had the starting rates in there last year. So I added the highs for last year for the twenty-twenty-one and twenty-two school year. And then I also had twenty-twenty-two and twenty-three in here. So this is just the starting rate for each position on our support staff and the highest paid rate, highest paid personnel. So, so that's it.
Thank you.
I'll say.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion passes. All right. Number one, approve the low middle school extra curricular handbook.
Yeah, so the middle school said that they didn't have one, and so they created one. And we'd like to present that to you tonight for approval. Just to help, the purpose is to keep her right on the same page regarding extra curriculums that do not totally encompass the athletics. We already have an athletic. So the practices are already in play, they just created.
Free out, right. Good idea. It's just a good idea, I mean, again, they're, you know, they're extra curriculums besides sports are just as important.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion passes. Number two, approve the appointment of Diana L. M. as the Tri-Tri-Street School Corporation representative to the World Public Library Board of Trustees effective October first, twenty-two through September thirtieth of twenty-six.
I'll make your motion to approve.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion passes. Number three, adopt the resolution twenty-two dash oh seven, reimburse the resolution.
Yes, this is, well, I've got Thomas Peterson, our volunteer here, to help us go through all of these resolutions. This is starting the process for issuance of funds in order to add on to our Lake Prairie Elementary School. I can speak broadly on this project because, let's just say, the construction market is crazy with how much you can actually buy versus the dollar. So what we'd like to do is add on at least six classrooms and increase our cafeteria size though, too. We have other projects that we can throw in there. If, for some reason, it comes in a lot less, but that's probably not the case. And again, I'm hoping to get six classrooms and a larger cafeteria in that space. So I guess you can go over the form, if that's okay, Thomas, please.
Okay. The two resolutions before you tonight start the process for financing and getting into the tax-exempt bond market. The first is one is required by the Internal Revenue Service called a reimbursement resolution, which from this day forward, should there be any expenses that Dana has to incur to get the process moving on the construction side, we'd be allowed to use bond proceeds when the bonds are ultimately issued to reimburse the school for those costs. And the second is to approve the formative amendment to lease. This is the structure that we have done frequently. Indiana School Finance for Construction uses building corporations as the actual issuer of the bonds. The building corporation then leases the facility to the school. The school places lease rentals, which are magically matched to the debt service of the building corporation's bonds. And then under both statute and the contract, when the bonds are retired, the building corporation transfers the real estate back to the school at no cost. So I would suggest adopting both of these resolutions and I would set up a public hearing at your October twenty-seventh meeting.
Is that the third resolution here?
Yes, the third one's here.
Oh, I forgot about the third one. Oops. Well, this is, you're from there, two thousand and fifteen, right?
Yes.
Yes. There's an opportunity to go refunding there and to set that up. The whole trouble is, fun little thing, you may have heard the Fed just raised interest rates by three-quarters of a percent. We don't know how that's going to affect the tax-exempt bond market. Sometimes they go a lockstep, sometimes they actually go opposite. But this would set us up to do that. And right now, your savings target is pretty close to about an eight percent of what you would have paid in debt service to refund. It's kind of relatively short maturity schedule left, but with the beneficial interest rates should be a savings. And that is after paying all positive issuance and everything else. So this would set up and authorize Dana and then Steefall, your underwriters, Mr. Elizondo, to prepare to go to the market so that when they see something favorable, they'd be able to sell bonds and lock in your savings. But there's no guarantees that it would actually happen because, as Dana was saying, with construction prices, we don't know where interest rates are going. If I didn't know, I wouldn't be here this evening. I'd be on a beach with a umbrella and a train, and we'd go from that. So again, this sets us up so that we'll be in position to strike should the market be favorable. So I would suggest all three resolutions.
I think we do all three.
We make all three.
I'll make a motion to top resolutions twenty-two, oh seven, twenty-two, oh eight, twenty-two, oh nine.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion passes.
I see you on the twenty-seventh.
All right, let's wait on the sixth. Thank you. Number six, approve proposal for the initiation of Lowell High School Red Devils Page Turners Club. The proposals will be about a love for reading and reading among students at Lowell High School. Club sponsors are in Kozma and Amy Mikovits and Lindsay.
Yeah, they're not here, it's just you and me. Can I come up there, is that okay? Oh, yeah, just get closer. Um, I like to talk a lot, so I try to leave notes so I wouldn't take too much of her time. Um, so I'm not sure what I'm supposed to say. Angela just said that you wanted to hear a little bit about the club. Is that right?
Yes.
So, um, the reason why I think that we need a club that focuses on literacy at the high school is because several years ago, the middle school humanities teachers worked really hard to develop a program within their school to promote a love of reading. And they kind of broke many of the rules, I think, that they had been following previously about their literature in the classrooms and the curriculum. And it was super successful. So I teach English nine, and as I'm watching students come into the high school, they are expecting to be pushed in their reading and they are expecting to be rewarded for, you know, finishing novels and keeping track of their reading and reading things that they actually enjoy reading. So we tried to revamp our English nine curriculum quite a bit to accommodate that love. And then I kind of think that things fall off a little bit. So I want to bring sort of a culture shift to the high school to try to keep that love of reading. And as the kids, like I had a student this year, and I career come in and on the first day, he's like, Mrs. Mino, not only did I read your summer reading packet, but I also read The Odyssey this summer and I read Frankenstein and I read a six-book series that started from a video game. And so they, they really established this culture and love for reading, and I want to keep that going. So I don't really have concrete plans because I think that I want the students to be very involved in this. Mrs. Mikovits is another English nine teacher. She also teaches English eleven and honors eleven. She's new and she has, her strengths are my weaknesses. So she's very much into Yomigal literature and into fantasy and all these genres that I don't usually read. So she's going to be a great resource for students. And then Mrs. Kozma is very creative. She's our school librarian. She often taps into the English nine classes to try to promote her initiatives and the things that she has going on in the building. So I think if the three of us work together and establish a core group of students across grades nine through twelve, that we can use the students' voice to help promote this. So we're hoping for three to four ambassadors per grade level this year and then kind of hammer out details and grow as a program and hopefully by next year, it'll be better.
Thank you.
Very good.
All right, thank you.
Very good, sounds great.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion passes. All right, number one, approve the partnership with Transform, Transform Consulting Group to lead our work to secure high-quality pre-kindr- pre-kindergarten program at Tri-Street.
So for members, you had two ladies from Transform Consulting Group present to you about a month ago. In that time, we asked them to put together a written proposal, which we shared in your board docs a couple of weeks ago for review. That outlined the two phases that were really the crux of their presentation. Just to review that, the first phase is their facility study, oh, I'm sorry, feasibility study and implementation plan. That's really the learning phase. So as they map that out, it really would begin as soon as we have board approval and then move into about January, early February, the latest. And that's where we have community listening posts, surveys, and just a major needs assessment of like, what does our community want? Where are their gaps and trying to fill those needs? And how can we roll out a plan that would start to fill those with the best quality pre-kindergarten seats that we can, that we can do? So through that, they would be the leads, and obviously they spoke to having a point of contact in the district, that would then be bouncing back and forth what they're gleaning from our community. So truly identifying, how many classes do we need? How many seats are desired, that kind of thing. So there are a lot of unknowns out there. So there are a lot of unknowns out there. What we do know is that there are limited pre-k seats in our community right now as a number of our pre-k programs no longer exist and began going under either right before the pandemic or throughout it. So that is something that we've heard very real in the facility study plans that we've had throughout last year. The second phase of that is based on all of that needs assessment, working in conjunction with the early learning committee members, and of course, the board, putting in an implementation plan and supporting us all along the way. So that's everything from curriculum, resources, setting, instruction, training, everything that we would need to make sure that as soon as that consultation agreement is completed, we are not only prepared, we are above and beyond prepared and equipped to run and sustain that program for years to come. So that guidance and that expertise is what makes the partnership so incredibly valuable to us because it's a very different world from K through, K through twelve education, and we need that expertise. I did make mention at that presentation that, like all school districts that have S R funds, we wanted to make sure at Tri-Creek that we use our S R funds to build capacity. That we weren't just necessarily get things that were one and done, but even when the funds were gone, programs would still be the result of investing in those relationships. Our partnership with Behavioral Supports of Indiana is a good example of that. This would absolutely follow in line with that. I did reach out to the Department of Education for an initial review and feedback to see and confirm that this would be an S R allowable fund, and on first review, they said yes. So on board review, I can formally click the submit button on that for a second review, and then we would hopefully get that approval relatively quickly and be able to build a partnership here in the fall.
At least it's not going to come out of our budget, it's going to be part of the grants.
That is correct. And that would, yeah, and that would include both Phase One and Phase Two of those S R funds. Which again, I'd just like to validate that that's a great way to say that we invest in this as something that could be a program that could last generations here in the school corporation.
I like the fact that they had the alternative funding sources laid out for us.
Yes, a lot of knowledge and expertise there for us.
I have a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Second. I have a motion, second. Any further discussion? All in favor would say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion passes. Ready, to approve the school improvement plans for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year.
Yes, tonight, we present to you five schools' improvement plans. I'll tag team with Kevin here. We, once the strategic plan was developed, we then looked and brought the instructional leadership team of all the principals, assistant principals together in July, and we reviewed student performance data. We looked at our strategic plan, the academic goal specifically, and we framed out specific academic district level goals. And then Kevin and I sat down with each principal to talk about their specific goals for their particular buildings to ensure that we had alignment with the district goals. And once we kind of framed that out, then the principals, assistant principals, then went back to their buildings and worked with their school improvement teams, typically their team leaders, assistant team leaders, and then they worked through those processes to ensure that building goals aligned with district goals, and district goals aligned with strategic planning goals. Anything else to add?
I just think that we've shared, like, typical data points that are kind of like universal, that like at the district level, you would say, we want to achieve this, and then each of those buildings or grade levels has a role in that. So the academic goals, you would see I-Learn absolutely show up in there. You will see N W E A, which is a form of the piece that we use grades K through eight. And then you can see S A T, which is now the graduating qualifying exam for our juniors at the high school levels. You're seeing major assessments that are going to like kind of build upon each other, beginning as young as third grade and then heading all the way up until the eleventh grade here, is what really informed those building level academic goals. I think to Mr. Anderson's point, the nice thing is you have an umbrella of a strategic plan that ensures each school is seeing what can I do to do my part to meet that overarching district goal in each of those areas. Because certain schools have extremely high math scores, so they may be focusing their step on an E L A goal, while another school might be inverse to that. So it makes it specific to their building instead of just a one-size-fits-all.
So our recommendation would be for you to approve presented school improvement plans.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. I have a motion, second. Any further discussion? All in favor would say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion passes. Board policy, number one, review and discuss the board policy thirty-six, one, five, adjunct teachers.
Yeah, so we're still floating this out there. It is on the agenda for the October discussion meeting with the teachers' union. At our last meeting, Mr. Ward, who was president, and Mr. Crowell, who wasn't, asked the question, are there board policies out there that we could take a look at for schools who actually hired adjunct teachers? Dana did a plea, solicitation online and really didn't have any hits on that. But Kevin went to the, the Soberland Development Conference in Indianapolis on Monday and ran into some people who have hired, did you say four?
It was four people at their school, yeah.
Four adjunct teachers, and so Dana reached out to that school district today and was able to get our hands on a copy of their board policy that we can compare to what we have.
Student county, is that where it's signed?
Angola.
Angola.
Okay. So no action required, it's still just for information only. And so we proceed, talk to the teacher union, and then we'll come back, and then at some point, or we'll take action, or we'll take it off the agenda.
So this has gone through the union process. Kevin, this has gone through the union process with the school?
Yeah, Angola. Yes, it went through it. They had a very lengthy discussion. She said it was a pretty long, because it's a, you know, it's a tough topic. It's a tough topic, but she said that they were in the situation where if they didn't have it, they wouldn't have. I think she said four positions at the time of the meeting.
Thank you. Number two, approve the provisions to the board policy sixteen, fourteen, staffed student non-fragmentation.
So we made some revisions, and then we had some revisions to the revisions, and we let it marinate, and it's time to present our recommendation to approve the revisions.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second the motion.
Fourth process. I have a motion, second. Further discussion? All in favor would say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion passes. Set items, number one, approve the overnight study trip for Lowell High School, Future Farmers of America, to attend the twenty-two National FFA Convention and Expo in Indianapolis, Indiana, October twenty-sixth to twenty-ninth.
It's cool, it's in Indianapolis, huh?
Yeah.
Can we just point out, if I may, there's a pork chop dinner tomorrow night before the homecoming game, and profits from that will
For that, many a time.
I think most do approve.
I'll second.
I have a motion, second. Any further discussion? All in favor would say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion passes.
No, we're the only FFA in the county, so.
Are we now? Yeah. How you doing, good, you're sir?
I've fought lots of kids, you know, but.
Number two, accept a donation from the pre-grade elementary school PTO, the amount of one hundred and ninety-seven dollars and forty-five cents to assist students with bookstore items for the start of the year. Number three, accept a donation from the pre-grade elementary school PTO, the amount of four hundred and eleven dollars and eighty-one cents to help fund the grade one study trip.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
I have a motion, second. Any further discussion? All in favor would say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion passes. Poll participation, number two, Mary.
Do you want me to come up there or I can just talk for a bit? Thank you for allowing me to come talk. So I have a couple of concerns that I have. Longtime local resident, pushing almost thirty years, same house, right next to the Pop Warner fields. So I have just a list I want to kind of go through. I'm sure you know libraries, but I'm just going to go over about some of my concerns. So first of all, they've just gotten worse over the years, especially since the old middle school got torn down. This has gotten progressively worse. I live right next door to those fields. My biggest concern, I don't know if they are parents and or coaches, but they send players into my yard to urinate. There are two porta potties out there currently. It was just a few weeks ago when a little boy was up in my yard urinating on a tree. Players will climb trees, which is not a big deal. Be a kid, that's fine. I don't care if they come up in my yard, just don't damage your property. Clean up after yourself. When they climb trees, they're trying to break limbs off, and a parent just watches what he does and not pay. That's a concern to me, for sure. They will leave trash in my yard, the adults smoke on school grounds, and then throw their cigarette blunts in my yard. Coaches and parents, I personally caught them drinking after a practice the Saturday before school started. I did call the Lowell Police Department at that time, which the Lowell Police Department informed me that there is a contract between Pop Warner and the school district, and therefore, they can drink.
Did they find alcohol there, the police?
Yes, and he said they are not inebriated. They were drinking. I walked away from them, back up into my yard, and watched the dads keep spinning in the beer.
There's no way that that would make us, but.
What's that?
Well, I'm not.
That police officer told me.
Well, he's wrong.
Oh, well, that's what I thought, but he said they have a contract between
It's not going to be a guy, right?
It's not about us.
Well, maybe he's wrong.
But.
We don't know.
No, 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 that there was not.
Did you say there was not?
That's what, that's what I was told.
Who told you that?
The Pop Warner president, vice president.
Well, then I would like to have a conversation between me and you and those three or four coaches.
Well, I'll, I'll speak to them.
But I asked for a conversation between me and you and them, because then that means they're calling me a liar, and I am not a liar. I have no reason to try to get anyone in trouble. I just want Pop Warner to be respectful of where they practice and realize this is a residential neighborhood.
Motion, then.
And for them to say that, I'm really disappointed. It leaves a bad taste in the mouth about Pop Warner. The Saturday that this happened, the music that they were playing after the practice was so loud. It was a very hot Saturday. I was inside, my air conditioning's running, windows and doors are closed, and I could hear the music as though it were playing right next to me.
Where are they doing the sound, these are?
On the football field.
Even where, like, the actual field, so it was on the practice field.
Not on the football field.
The music plays from the pole barn out on the fields.
Okay.
But the dads that were drinking that day, they were literally in the parking lot, that little strip of road that runs right there. That's where they were drinking, and their kids were right there. I don't care if they drink, just don't drink in that environment.
Schools are drinking loud, so.
No, there's none at all.
But that, I think the police officer, who was all about that.
Andy, can you talk to the police department about this?
There were two squads that came out.
Well, did he know what the law, whatever he says?
He was adamant that I was in the wrong. I'm just letting you know that.
Okay, I'm just sorry to hear that.
I appreciate that, because this has been a long time coming. I was raised, if you have a problem, you go and talk to the person you have a problem with, you go gossip and talk behind their back. I have every year gone to whoever is heading up Pop Warner and asked them, how about, hey, that kid's already in my yard again. They're leaving trash, the music's loud, and it might stop for a couple of weeks if I'm lucky for the rest of the season, but it starts all over again the next year. Another big issue. Parking on the end of my street, I realize it's a public street, but at times, they partially block my driveway, making it difficult for me to get in when I'm coming home from work, or if I need to leave. On one specific occasion, I stepped out there and asked one of the dads if he would please move his truck. He said, sure. I turned to walk away to go get my vehicle, and he called back to me, you mean to say you can't navigate around these vehicles? And I turned around and said, that's not the issue. You are parked directly across from my driveway, you have a big SUV, I have a big SUV. When I go back out, there's cars everywhere. There's very little room to navigate. That was the issue. Parents will drive through my yard, of course, buds right up to the, just school's yard. They will cut across there, jump the curb, drive through that field right there, cut through part of my yard. They go around the barricade, which is the gate. I would just ask that whoever has the power to, to please take some steps, steps to rectify this. This is not a one-time incident, this has been building for years. It mostly impacts me because mine yard is literally right there. But I can tell my neighbors on the block also have the same concerns that I have, that I'm the one who's hurt. My next really big concern, since the old middle school was torn down, those gates that were put up, they blocked our street, which of course now made it a dead end, which in and of itself is maybe not. Yeah, it's really not going to be involved, but I'm sure many of you in here are aware of what happened yesterday. And I was just at the town board meeting and was thinking the same thing. If there is ever an emergency, emergency vehicles can get through. That's exactly what it is to my mom. If you don't know, my neighbor's home burned, they lost everything. She has her work clothes on in her vehicle, they lost four pets. Thank goodness, no, nobody was home, but everything is gone. Emergency vehicles, my understanding is they tried to get through, but of course, there were barricades up. So I was at the training, I left, I texted John and asked if he could send somebody over to open the gate, and somebody did go by late. But at that point, all of the emergency vehicles were coming down this way down the street. They didn't even know that there was a fire hydrant right next to her house, and they went halfway down the block to get the hose. They lost a lot of time, but there were so many snap trees that happened yesterday. I don't know that it would have changed the outcome, but I just, it's just frustrating that even residents who live on that street have to go all the way around. And for sure, a safety issue a few years back when the previous neighbor lived there. One of them needed an ambulance, and the ambulance had come around. I don't remember if that second gate was open or not, but they got down to the gate right by my house. And of course, it was locked, the ambulance had to go all the way back around. It just, it's heartbreaking. And if you were in that situation, I'm sure you would feel the same way that I do. I have some solutions, though. I didn't just come here with problems, I have some solutions. I would propose putting in an electric gate with a key card, given only to residents, charge us a deposit, whatever amount, I'm not sure, propose that dollar amount, but so that we can get in and out of our streets, those of us that actually live on that street. And that key card, it can be deactivated at any time if there was an issue. And emergency vehicles should also have those mounted in their vehicles so that if they need to get through, they can just use that key card to get through. Going back to the gate being down, if Pop Warner had been there, there's no way those emergency vehicles would have gotten on the street. They will park, so if here's the road, there's that gate, they are parked all the way down, well, sometimes halfway down the street, and sometimes even right smack to the moon. There will be three parts going across. And I don't think that's appropriate, it shouldn't, it just shouldn't be happening. If an emergency, or if a town vehicle only gets to get through, they don't want to get through. I just wanted to bring those to your attention because Pop Warner issues have been a long time.
Yes, it does reference, a Bible school house is interested in that.
Like, I don't think of that, but, but I mean, usually we have to vote on it every so often.
You do, I don't have to look and see.
I mean, surely there's a record of the officers that came out. I'm sure they have the names of them. I know one of them had a big white SUV, it was a, I believe, a red Jeep.
He doesn't need to make that clear with him. Yeah, I'm not sure we're going to be able to do anything about the street because it's not our.
The parking on the street?
Yeah, maybe, we can.
Well, I did go to the town, and they said it's a public street, and I'm like, well, this is also a safety issue, but.
It's with the town, unfortunately.
Well, and they said it's with the school. And so I don't want to get caught in between, but.
I'll tell you, part of our new guiding principles, the category is focus on solutions. And we want to be a good community neighbor partnership, so we can take a comprehensive look. I've taken notes of all the items that you've reported out tonight.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
And, um, someone from my office will circle back around to you and just update you on the efforts that we've taken.
I would really appreciate that. Today it seems like an easy fix, give us a key card, nobody else can get down, use that except the residents. I just wanted to make you guys aware of that, thank you for your time.
You know, meeting with the representatives of the Pop Warner calls.
I didn't talk with, uh, with his last name, Gilbert, who said, David, the little boy urinated in my yard that day.
I don't know the guys anymore, I used to know, but they're pretty, you know, pretty separate, you know.
Correct. I know they talked to the parents, there's a team that practices right there. They talked to the parents and that's hard in there, but it's.
He didn't tell me that, he said, I've asked him.
And I know it wasn't telling the team, but it's, and I've seen that there's fewer, there's less people parking there now, but.
Right.
There's still a, uh, when you.
There is, and I guess the kicker, no pun intended, is that there is a big parking lot there, half empty. There's no reason for them to park here, walk across the fields. I just, I want them to be respectful of my home and my neighborhood. That this is where we live and they wouldn't want that happening where they live. So I guess that's just how I try to see things, is how to find behavior for that someone else. And I wouldn't want to do that to someone else. That's why I wanted to say, thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other information, um, the board is scheduled work session on Wednesday, September twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two at six P M. At the Wall Middle School cafeteria will discuss facility planning. Two, the board is scheduled executive session on Tuesday, October fourth, twenty-two at one P M. At two oh one North Illinois Street, Indianapolis, Indiana. To train the school board members with an outside consultant with performance of the role of the members of public officials. And number three, the next, uh, mandatory school board meeting will be October thirteenth. Anybody got any more questions? Alex?